Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
It is six o'clock?
Six thirty.
Six thirty one. Six thirty one. And we are convening a joint meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District with the Westminster School District. And I will ask for public comments if there are any because I asked for adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments? Hearing none. We will go on to four, which is all unfinished business for discussion and action. And this is the State Board of Education.
I just wanted to make sure that there are any communications or public comments that I wasn't sure whether there was anyone on.
I was looking, there wasn't. Maybe there is now. So let's see. Is anybody from Fact TV who want to talk to us?
Absolutely not. Colin is the only one there.
Okay. Well, well, we will note for the record that Colin is there. The State Board of Education, September fifteenth meeting. I'm going to ask Cheryl to lead this. I'm going to, and you should be anticipating two resolutions this evening.
All right, well, I'll try to bring everybody up to date. We, the two boards on September eighth responded to the request from the State Board of Education to provide information that we had been asked to address in their April twenty one meeting. And so we did that. We sent the correspondence on September eighth. And that was to assert, to inform the State Board that an election had been held, that school board members were elected, and that in another election at their request, the voters of Athens, Grafton, and Westminster all voted. All voted. I don't mind looking for it. That the voters in all three.
You're learning what you're doing.
All three towns. Actually, more than ninety percent of the voters in all three towns voted to approve the terms of the financial agreement. And those terms really simply are that Westminster's two school buildings, one of which we're sitting in, the Westminster Center School and the Westminster West School Building are returned to the town at no cost. And that further, the townspeople of Westminster assume the debt, all the remaining debt on the gymnasium that's here at this building. So that's what we agreed to. And then the next part of the request from the State Board was that we, representing the Union Elementary School District and the Westminster School District, appear before the State Board this week on September fifteenth. We're awaiting the details of that agenda, but we plan to be there to participate and to answer their questions as needed. With that, we've also gotten counsel along the way. And we had an additional request for consideration. And Jack, you can help address this part of it. But we think that for all of the reasons that we're still in the midst of a pandemic affecting our children and our teachers and all the others who work in our schools, that it's budget season. We're beginning to be asked to start on the budget planning process, that there are significant federal monies coming into the district, approximately eighteen million to the Supervisory Union overall, that there are a number of important issues that would warrant the representatives from Westminster to be able to sit as voting members of the Supervisory Union Board. And so that additional request has been submitted to the State Board. However, on reflection, we think it might be helpful to do even more. And that's a part of what will be discussed tonight.
Yes, we're going to talk. Two items need to be done. There was a need for crossing the team, dotting the eye on the specific dollar amounts. Flor Pagan spent some time and prep with both Cheryl and I this evening. We worked out, we ticked these numbers a couple of different ways. The, I will be looking for a resolution to authorize that, or to settle that agreement to be a number determined by our financial, our finance manager, but for amount to be no less than three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, six hundred and fifty-six, fifty-nine and fifty-nine cents. There are a couple of ways that we saw those numbers tonight. This is the lowest of those numbers. So that's why I was saying it would be no less than. It might be as high as maybe three hundred and ninety-seven or four hundred something, but we know it will be at least that. So we wanted to put that on the record that we got an agreement that that was processed.
You're talking about the debt.
Talking about the debt. That comes with essentially buildings and debt.
The remaining debt.
Here you are. The second item, which, and I apologize for repeating what Cheryl's already said to some extent, is this. The, David put major, put a good paid effort in, as did a couple of us a couple of other times, to suggest we might want to accelerate the schedule by which Westminster took over their, their facilities and the buildings. And we got fairly hard pushback and an advisory from the Agency of Education saying that assuming operational control would be until I want. Fine. But operational control of what? Operational control of the budget that you didn't approve? Operational control of staffing that you didn't approve? It seems to me that the planning function is key, and that function is one that you should own. And we would be, we would be uncomfortable if you didn't. And so for that reason, the, this letter that I'm going to ask you to authorize me to draft, Cheryl will help me with it. We will say that we are asking for an accelerated schedule for you to take on the planning functions. Planning function means what? It means that you prepare the budget. You have the legal authority to present it to the, to the voters right now. That's not the case, and you have that. And I find that objectionable, that you have voting rights at the SU Board when it comes to, comes to their budget, since it's almost forty percent of your total. And you don't have, it's not, it's not, you don't have meaningful control of your budget if you don't have any full control of forty percent of it. That in addition, that, that when it comes to staffing, the, the staffing approval is in April, three months in advance of your taking control. So if you don't have the right to approve your staff, and if you don't have the right to plan your budget, then you cannot possibly have operational control until I want. Therefore, we want you to have these items. And what we're saying is that the default should be that it's planning unless the SU Board says it's not. So you should have effective voting rights for eighty percent of what the SU Board does. And that you should have full control over budgetary staffing and any other protocols you feel that you need to have in effect as of July one that are not in effect before that. So that if you decided you wanted to have, have certain policies and procedures to take effect on the day of your assumption, that you could have that all taken care of. So that, so what we're doing is we're, we're doing a little definition for our friends at the SBE. They said that after the approval of, of the financial settlement, that they were in, what they described as uncharted territory. And we're saying, we're going to provide you with the navigation guides, the reefs, the shoals, and the best direction to get from here to there. And we want you to effectively not be okay with that and not get in the way of it. So that is, that is essentially the letter that we've crafted. We've got a draft. I've run out of room to share it tonight, but right now I think the key would be to have you give an approval for me to write it. And we will ask, we'll ask council to review it so that we can say council reviewed it. We've already had Sean say in effect that he agrees as a distinction between planning and operational control, and that it's not inconsistent with their guidance to give you that power. So there, that's a long version of the, or a short version. So, yes.
I, that makes very good sense to me. And almost, I hadn't even entertained the possibility that we wouldn't be, that we wouldn't be responsible for drafting the budget for the, for the reconstituted or new Westminster School District and have that presented to the voters in March. And I, you know, I'm looking at the statute, which Sean Tui sent, sent to us. And it is, it is, it's remarkably unclear on these matters. And it just says, "The State Board shall declare the membership of the withdrawing member in the Union District to end as of July one immediately following or as soon thereafter as the obligations of withdrawing member have been paid to or agreement made with Union District." We've done all that. But the other, the other thing is that's just the, it will declare the membership of the withdrawing member to end. But does, but what, it doesn't refer to anything regarding what the, the new, new district does in preparation to take over. And I am trying to remember when it was in the reverse. And the, the Westminster School District, the Athens School District, the Grafton School District were sort of terminated, and the unified district began. I believe that the, in that last year. Well, I certainly remember us having kind of no responsibility after July one except to review the audits.
Right.
But, but prior, but that in that intervening year.
That we're supposed to have, that was supposed to be our planning year. We all stopped and said, we're going to, we're going to go to court and see if we're going to have to do any of that.
Right.
Stinking planning.
Right.
But it all worked out because, I mean, some of the things like the separate budgets, we had worked out. But for, but it seems to me that, given that a planning, planning year was built into their model, that if with the end date being X, that the X for you is July one, twenty twenty-two, and therefore would only make sense that you would be, that there would be an understanding that you would need that same amount of time for planning purposes here. I mean, the bottom line is budget season begins in September. You need to have voting authority on the SU Board in September for the, the next meeting if we can make it. And therefore, everything falls from that, all the other dates. And I may, we'll see if we need to put together sort of a schedule of things that you need to do as part of it, or our recommended schedule. You know, like April, prove staff. December, approve budget and warn it. September, meet with, you know, November, have, have a preliminary SU budget. These are the things that you will need, and you will need them, period. So you need to be part of that. You need to have voting, voting rights to determine your fate. And this seems like the best method of doing it. And we'll see, you know, if I was in a good mood, we'll get it. So we have a get it. All right. So I'm looking for two motions. The first motion is to confirm the vote of the communities to transfer properties currently in Westminster and held, and owned by the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District to the Westminster School District. And to also transfer the debt attached to those buildings at a cost to be determined by the Finance Director of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union for an amount to be no less than three hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. So who on the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District has that motion?
So.
All right. Is there any discussion about this? Jessa, I see you're on now, and Melissa, you're on. And Ginger, I saw you do, and if you have any comments, and if you do, you'll have to open up your mic.
I do not.
All right. I, yes, go ahead.
I, I'm wondering, Jack, why we need to have this confirmation of the, what the town voters voted for?
Because if town voters did not have a dollar amount in it, and there was concern expressed that normally when you have budgets or finance items on a net agenda to be agreed on by voters, that there's a dollar amount attached. And we're just sort of, this was, I said, we're dotting an eye here and crossing a key. We did mention these things in the regional meeting, but it wasn't in your warning. Okay. So I am ready to call the question. How say you, Reese?
Yay.
Yay. Ginger, how say you?
I say yes.
All right. Jessa, how say you?
Yes.
Melissa, how say you?
Yes.
And Lynn, how say you?
Yes.
We have unanimity. So I am now looking for someone to make a motion to the effect of authorizing the Chair of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District to the State Board of Education, asking them to give the, give Westminster School Board a planning authority on all matters that will affect their operational control of, or, and other matters that would affect their operational control as of July one, twenty twenty-two. So, there we go. Is there any discussion on this point?
I just want, in, in the discussion of this motion, to make sure that the points you talked about are, are sort of front and center.
I wrote a draft this half an hour, about an hour and a half ago.
Right.
And so I'm sort of recant, I'm reciting it from memory.
Right.
If you will. So unless, unless Cheryl finds fault with my grammar four times that she has already, then that would be the, that would be the basis of the letter.
Great. And, and just to reiterate, those main points are?
The main points are that you cannot assume effective operational control if you have not been a participant in the planning leading up to it. And by that logic, that means that you have to have, you have to have a voting authority on the SU Board on all matters around budget or other matters that affect your ability to take operational control. And that in matters of budget or policy, or whatever else you think you need, that you be given that, that planning and prep authority to do these things. And as I said, I laid out those specific examples in the letter about, about budget.
And in addition to the work with the Supervisory Union Board, working as a board to prepare and present to the voters a budget for the school year starting July one, twenty twenty-two, at the time of town meeting.
And approval of your, of your staffing plan and all the rest.
For the, the coming year.
Right.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Again, I think it's, you go ahead, Cheryl. I see you're going to.
Well, it's, it's a question for a minute. The, the resolution says effective July one, twenty twenty-two. I wondered, are we covering all the things we need to cover for town meeting in March?
I had in the letter specifically mentioned that you needed to be able to prepare the budget. You need to be able to defend that budget, both at any pre-town and town meeting you have, essentially that you own, that you own this, and that it was improper for anyone to speak for you.
And so I think it makes sense that this part of the, the full monetary responsibility would start July one, because that's when our budgets end, but the, June thirtieth.
Yeah.
But the planning process needs to be such that we're integrally involved. That's what we're looking for.
Well, in fact, have the lead on it, is, you know.
Okay.
I, you know, I can give you a budget. And, you know, and I wouldn't be shocked if I get pulled in to help you with the budget on an informal basis. But the, but the vote to accept the budget, the vote that says, you know, this is our budget is yours, or should be yours. Right now, that's not the case. Now, you're simply in a position of giving us advice. You have no power to, to compel us to do anything we don't want to. And you just have to hope that Melissa and Elise are incredibly persuasive. But that's not appropriate. And I want to, I want to take care of that. And quite candidly, come March, I want, I want this board, it's not part of the letter, by the way, I want this board to modify its Articles of Agreement so that when the time comes, when you accept, when you have your operational authority, that we have a board that is comprised of however number members of Athens and Grafton we want it to be, and that we have a new name for it. We just have to, you know, we have to put the coin if it's Athens, Grafton, or Grafton, Athens. But, you know, those that, that we, that we do all of our stuff. But we, but for today, that's a board that they can't have any power over. We can change our stuff. They have all the power over you. So the letter is talking about giving you the power that you need to ensure that your operational control is actual control over something you made.
I'm not sure what my speaking rights are here.
You're speaking right. So this, these are joint meetings.
Okay. Basically, the way you described it initially, Jack, made perfect sense to me.
Oh, good.
The rationale is perfect. I imagine that the list of items is perfect, I haven't been through it, but it looks like you've got everything. I'm sure in the process of drafting it, you'll maybe.
I'll send a draft around everybody.
I like the idea of a time table. That should make it very concrete. We have to do this by November, we have to do this by December. Make it really concrete so that it's clear that we couldn't, that the coming school year could not be a functional school year unless we have full control of the planning and these stages.
Well, we, we did, I did discuss with Cheryl that my comfort would be to have an appendix to it that showed sort of the schedule of things that we anticipate you'll need to do during the period running the runoff. And it probably won't be complete because we don't have a, have a unified district schedule yet, but then, then our superintendent's only been here less than, you know, less than a week. And I know you should have had that all wrapped up by now, but still.
Whatever you put up with will be, will be, need just be convincing. There's a lot to do.
Don't ask me to be convincing. I'm trying my best. How's that? We'll go with that. All right. So, yes. Yes. How about from our colleagues that are remote tonight? Ginger, Jessa, Melissa?
My only question is about the seats on the Supervisory Union Board. Is that going to be another motion?
In the, in, I will, we have discussed in broad terms how this is a good idea at the SU. I would, you can look for a proposal from me at our next scheduled meeting to formally send your enthusiastic agreement to this idea. But we can't do it retroactively. But that would, my, my hope would be that right now, it's the opinion of attorney that until we've got some sort of at least passive acquiescence to the idea that we can't just on our own recognizance say, yep, they're voting members. We need at least to have some passive acknowledgement that we're going to do it. And in the letter that I've drafted, I've suggested that the, the Chair of the, of the SU Board, whoever she might be, would, would be welcome to rule on whether or not it was an item, that was a planning item or something that was operational as of right now. We put that all, we put that, you know, that, that bit of an olive branch into the proposal because I think it's easier for them to swallow. Again, you have to remember that we had recommended against giving you operational control, or giving Westminster operational control prior, despite David Major asking really, really nicely, and despite Cheryl trying also. So this is, this is my, my end run.
Back to the point of the, the seats on the SU Board.
Yes.
How will it be determined how many seats Westminster gets? Let me finish the thought. Westminster has on its SU Board. Is that the SU Board's decision, or is it the state's?
Will, that's a great question, and this might turn into a problem that we're trying very hard to have them not pay a lot of attention to. The, the S, the, our seats right now are allocated that we have, essentially, we have one member from, where we use that, one member from every town on that board. We don't have, moment, and usually it's three members per district. So I would assume that you would have three, three members. Right now, you've got one non-voting member, and the idea here, and we really don't want to spell it out for reasons of prompting questions, we really aren't ready to answer, that, that we just leave it up to the SU Board, but the rule under the bylaws is three.
So we're going to try and finish that one with the save and not, not poke that question.
It's called some, you know, some anthills you just don't want to poke for. That's, that's the deal. Yeah.
Just in terms of the wording of it, I, I think it's, it's got to be done delicately. And it may be that we want to word it to them that we're, we're asking for guidance in how to proceed. And this is what we suggest based on the needs that we see, or something like that.
In three separate meetings, they've said they don't know how to do this. So we're going to take them at their word that they don't know how to do this. We're suggesting that we're doing them a favor by giving them a roadmap, or shall we say navigation card, because we're not the only ones that are going to do this. And by essentially laying this out for them, doing their work for them, we have given them a nice pathway that they can use for other folks. You know, that's, that's, we, that's kind of the take we're using here is to say, you've said this is hard, we've done the work, here's how it looks, here's how it looks to us. Aren't we nice? Here it is. We need your approval so we can do it, and you can use this as your, as your, as your roadmap.
Essentially, the, the argument for being prepared for the school year, I think speaks for itself. Essentially, the argument for being on the SU Board is the Tea Party argument, no taxation without representation.
Well, right.
We want to say, listen, we can't allow that entity to determine our budget without any representation.
We're trying to be, yeah, we'll speak to this if questioned in more, in more blunt terms, but the, that's my children asking if I can be on FaceTime. The answer is maybe later. The, the, we know that, that, we've said that, you know, forty percent of your budget is SU. And if we go forward and move maintenance this next year to the SU, something, you know, I'm waving the five for, then it's, it's really a significant amount of money, all told, all told. So you can't have operational control without a voice at the table, or you can't have planning control without a voice at the table. And I, you know, it could be argued that the SU, that the, that the Unified District Board gives you that voice, but it doesn't really give, but it's not, I think it's unethical to ask them to vote your. them to vote your interests on items that they will have no responsibility for in the following year. So that's, that's kind of how we weigh that out. You know, as I told Cheryl, you know, the loud sound of the writing was the goalpost being moved three quarters way across the field. But that's, you know, that's how I think it's best way to. My hope is that this compromise, because it's still a compromise, will give you all you, you know, all you need to do, because that's a lot of work, and yet still adheres to the guidance that they get from the agency. We're not fighting the agency's guidance. We could, but as John said, it would cost you money and it would take longer to resolve than you've got. So this seems like a reasonable approach. Can't tell you how it's going to go, but that's our hope. All right, so with that.
Jack?
Yes.
Is there a timeline for this with the state if we submit this draft? Do they have a timeline for when they would give us that?
Well, we will be presenting this to the state at the meeting, which is on the.
Wednesday, two days from now, September 15.
Now, typically, they may hold that under advisement and wait a month. We're going to hope that they won't. We're going to hope very hard that they won't. But the idea is that ideally, they'll tell us right up front. And if they don't, then they're wise to give us a decision in their October meeting. But we're certainly hoping that that's not a deal. That's the reason for the argument about September for budget season.
Right. Let me add just a little bit more information too. As the law states, and David read the ambiguous law, but it's also clear that they have the authority now to give the Westminster School District full responsibility. They do not need to wait till July 1, 2022. We're not asking them, although I certainly thought it could be a good idea. We're not asking them to give us full authority now. We're asking them for what Jack has said, planning, a planning role and a vote at the table. That's really what this quest is about. And then I'd add for everybody's, you know, we've got all the, every board member is here tonight. Thank you, everybody. I'd add that we've talked with Flora Pagan, who's also joined this call tonight. And there really are, from the point of view of expenses that we're all accountable for tracking, we have kept the budgets internally separate for a long time. So it's not going to be a difficult bookkeeping process to separate these out. We therefore could take responsibility even before July 1. But more importantly, what Jack is proposing, and I think we're all discussing here, is this planning authority piece.
The only reason why I'm not proposing that you just take it up is because Don Arusso Savage gave to me written advisory countering it. And she also, because it's the way the state of Vermont works, says magically also the counsel for the AOE who said, whatever she said is good with us. And so since we have that there, the question is, how do we get around that barrier? And the answer seems to be that we don't give you day to day, we give you everything but, but how much time do we spend on day to day, really? I mean, what, you know, so you might not get to officially approve the principal's report. I'm sure that'll break everybody's heart. You know, it's that type of thing, you know? There really isn't that much you do during a course year that actually isn't planning and prep. So my hope is that, in fact, there'll be time to, maybe you'll come to the unified board and say, we think these things that you're doing right now would affect us next year. Because, and do you agree that they do? And we'll say, why? Why, yes. That sounds legit to me and we'll go with that. That's kind of the process I'm hoping we use. So.
Hi, Jack, it's Jessa again.
Yeah.
That's sort of what will go with the easiest to get through the state recommendations. But I would definitely like some sort of informal resolution that the WNEUSD board will accept the recommendations of the Westminster board for the budget. Because we are putting together a budget in October that they will have to put in place July 1, 2022.
Yes. Let me speak to that. One of the reasons I would rather not do that tonight, though in fact that's what's going to happen, is that's our backup plan. If the state says no to us, then we will absolutely go down that road. Well, I'm hope, but I don't want to say that tonight because then they'll say, well, why? Is there a problem? Because you've already agreed on this informal arrangement. I'd like you to have the actual voting authority. I want them to have the authority to, right now, technically, they don't have the authority to propose their own budget to their own voters. And that's ridiculous. So they need to have that. And they need to be, have voting authority at the SU when we're doing budgets, because the budgets are coming up now. So that's, you know, we will absolutely, you know, work out some sort of resolution giving them, you know, veto authority or taking their recommendations type of thing if this fails to go through.
But will this actually accomplish that?
Yes. This would give them, this should give them, this should give them pretty close to carte blanche on all matters, budgetary planning, staffing, personnel, building.
Before July.
Before July. Because in the argument that these are all things that they're going to own after July and therefore they should own the prep to get them there.
So my other question was that, right now, we're asking them, we're asking the state to grant them seats on the supervisory union board.
Yes.
I haven't been able to do in-depth research on it, but I don't know if the state can just tell the supervisory union to expand the board. And if the supervisory union, I know the supervisory union board itself can decide to expand it by two or three seats, are we expected to remove seats from the union elementary?
See, this has been the problem right along. David sort of improvised an arrangement. But there was never a ruling by the state to change the numbers of members on the SU board to begin with. There was never, nothing has been signed off on by the state in any of this stuff. And by law, they had the obligation to do that because there was a question about whether or not Wyndham, excuse me, Westminster was going to continue as a member of the SU was the legitimate, was the argument. So because that was all in flux, David, you know, kind of did one of these and decided this is, this is the best way not to get in trouble. I think he had some advice from Sean recommending that those steps be taken. What we're trying to do is to get the state who had the responsibility to actually take it and to acknowledge that this is an issue they never addressed. And it may be that they'll say, well, why don't you just go and solve it? And if they do, we'll say, hallelujah, problem solved, we're done and we're rolling. I'll take that just as much as any other answer. But right now, the, we don't have, you don't have the right to determine your membership. It's part of, an SU member is an SU member. You're bound by your articles, by your bylaws, which have never been amended to account for the fact that Westminster was in, for that matter, Athens and Grafton were no longer board members, were no longer members of the board. There is major work, Jessa West Clark, you are going to have to be doing soon to amend your bylaws for March so that they conform to the reality that's here. And we'll have a friendly offline chat about that at some point soon, I anticipate.
Okay, so that's one of my questions is, should we put something on the SU agenda for the 22nd?
I would.
Okay, to add seats for Westminster.
Right, and we can figure, and we'll be able to report to you. You could put it in as a state board of education meeting, action anticipated, addition of seats and bylaw amendment.
And bylaw amendment. I will get, I will ask Nicole, I guess, to have a copy of those available for all the board members of all the boards as well.
Yeah. I did, I gave Nicole a master copy of the bylaws, which I sent to her a while ago and might actually be on your, on your SU website. I can't remember if they landed there or not, but if they haven't been, I'm sure we can make that happen immediately.
I think I have them, so I'll check tomorrow and send that out to Jessa and Jack.
Yeah.
Oh, hi, Nicole. Can you put that on the agenda for the SU meeting too?
I was wondering when you were going to notice she was there. All right, so are we, can we, are we at a point yet? Apparently not.
Well, I was going to ask you about restating the motion. As it reads now, it doesn't say anything about voting. What you had said before is to authorize the chair of the WNUSD to write a letter, the state board of education, asking to give the Westminster School Board planning authority on all matters affecting their operational control and all other matters effective July 1. That's what you said.
Okay, including, well, I'll take it as a friendly amendment, including voting rights on the Wyndham Northeast. Supervisory Union Board. There we go. There's too many alphabets, yes.
Jack, I'm probably thinking too much. But I am thinking that if the Westminster Board gets the authority to work on the budget for Westminster, present it to the voters at town meeting and have that set for July, it then stands to reason that the WNUSD would be working on a budget for the AthGraft School and in the annual meeting of the Union or Unified District would be presenting that to the voters for approval. It wouldn't have Westminster.
Right.
But it should be noted that Westminster voters could still vote on that budget until July 1.
They will not be able to vote on, no, actually, the Westminster voters will not be able to vote on, on March, on the Unified District's budget. That will not, they will only be able to vote on your budget. Because that budget, because you're going to be a separate district with no say over what the Unified District will be doing.
I understand the logic of it.
No, we already worked that out. That part, that part we got nailed.
Okay.
Yes, I don't know if I'm pulling now.
Okay, because the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District is not, there's no discontinuity. It'd be the same district, except that the members of, that Westminster will not be part of it and therefore they do not get to vote on money that they'll be taxing for, for the new AthGraft District, because they're not, they're not going to be paying anything on it. They're not going to have any say over it. That, we got, we're clear on.
That makes perfect sense to me. I just want to make sure that that's what, that's recognized by the state.
I think on the point of order, you're not quite correct. I think if, unless the state releases us, we will still be part of that union. If we've only been given planning authority, we will still be part of the union.
You have been given conditional authority to be a new district. You have been given, you have to this, to the following extent, that you will take power on July 1, assuming that you have elected a board, we believe that's happened, that you have settled your debt, we believe that's happened. So the conditions, those conditions will have been met as of tonight. So all the conditions on that conditional, that conditional grant will have been met. There is no further conditions to have been met. Congratulations, you are an independent board with authority for July 1. The question is not whether that's in question. We're not, we're staying, that's settled. The issue is, what does operational authority mean and doesn't mean being able to plan for those and to put in effect all the steps you need prior to taking control? And that's what we're trying to do.
I think David's point, I don't think you've answered David's point. I think by the letter of the law, we will still be part, if they haven't released us, if on Wednesday they don't release us from the Unified Union.
If they haven't.
Then we still will be part of it.
If they haven't released us, then there will be one, still one district, still one vote, still one budget, you know, all that will still be the case. But by law, if we've met these conditions, they are obliged to grant this to us. That's what the law says here, obliged to do that. And that's the reason why I'm not worried. I, if, listen, if this turns, if this blows up into something epic, we will, we'll be back and we'll be talking about it.
Yeah, I mean, it just goes, it just goes to show how.
Sort of absurd it is that, that the Westminster Board wouldn't have the authority to work on the Westminster budget and that would be voted on by Westminster voters. And the Athens and Grafton Unified Board would have the authority to work on the AthGraft budget and that would be voted on by the AthGraft voters. I just, I, the thing that my hangup is just the wording that says it becomes official July 1 and, or could, if that's what the state board says. And so.
But you know, all, this could be an argument, but all the more reasons to release us on Wednesday so we don't get into this absolute black line of being in two worlds at the same time.
Well, this is my, this is my attempt to, since the most straightforward approach that, that you all tried before and got slapped for, this is my, this is what I'll call an artful end run that I believe will work. And I'd like, and I'd like you to authorize, and I'm only asking the Unified Board to do this, by the way, because you're just a bunch. Is to, is to authorize me to write that letter. And that is the only thing that's here. And, you know, we, Cheryl's got a version of it, but it's in, you know, one point type right now on her, on her machine. So I will send it all to you. You can, you can tell me how horrible it is, but I need to get it done tomorrow by noon. All right, so there's the deal. I'm going to call the question because I'm tired. Members of the Unified District, what say you? Lynn?
Yes.
All right, Elise?
Yes.
Ginger?
Yes.
Jessa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Did I miss anybody? Because my brain is frying. All right, then I believe there was a tight vote with the yeses having. So this is, this is item six, director's comments, and I'll conclude all directors so that my advisory people can advise. Any, starting from my left, David?
I wanted to thank you and Cheryl for being on top of sending that letter out to the State Board of Education on the 8th by the time they required it and for being proactive about this issue of when things actually should take place. I wanted to ask whether we have any idea whether on the 15th, the meeting is in the morning or the afternoon, our place, and we don't know yet. And I also wanted to just note that the, that the Westminster Select Board has asked a couple of us to come on the 22nd to, to talk about the expenses related to all of this shenanigans and who is, who, and hoping to, that someone besides the town will pay for them, I think.
Are we talking about the votes and all that good stuff?
The votes and the lawyer fees and so on. And I'm, maybe, maybe we should ask the State Board of Education whether they would like to pay for it since they made it all happen.
We own the lawyer fees. We, you know, this district owns the lawyer fees. They would be happy to let you have all that you want. You know, this person, the the question about votes, you know, we, I would just suggest to them, it's the same issue that they've complained about with justification before, which is that the that your your Board of Elections or whatever it's called, your your clerk's office has the same responsibility for conducting elections, whether they are conducted by the state, by the locality, by their own locality, and it's just part of the price to do in business. We've we've informally covered expenses in the past, and so they wanted more. But then again, you know, Athens and Grafton have the same costs. And yeah, my, you know, live with it is probably the polite, less polite version, but I'm sure that we'll come up with something more tactful. Yeah, I'm on the record. So, yeah, there we go. So, all right. So Director's Comments going forward, Elise.
Um, I just also would like to thank you for all your your work in making this happen moving forward. I just had a question. What, does anyone know whatever happened to Ripton?
Ripton had some organizational issues, which we were prepared for and they were not. And we'll just have to see how it works out.
I think last time I watched, they were giving conditional approval also.
That that's, yeah, district extra, extra money. I sent them our roadmap, you know? I mean, you can only do so much. Charlie?
Thank you also for me and no further comments.
All right. Lynn?
Yeah, did all of everybody's say thanks to you guys for being able to foresee what's coming on and put together this roadmap.
Cheryl?
Sound logical.
No, I appreciate, again, all members of both boards being here tonight. Thank you very much.
How about you, Ginger? Ginger's taking a bow.
No, I wanted to thank all of you for all your work as well. And it sounds like we're in agreement. I just hope that we have good luck on Wednesday and get an answer.
Jessa?
I just want to thank Westminster, the the, I don't know what you're called right now, if it's not the School Board and the voters in the Select Boards for sort of orchestrating this amicable divorce. Like all amicable divorces, we are here for the children. And also, somebody made mention about the absurdity of the State Board of Education. And also, that's why we're here. And I do like the fact that we've sort of come up with a Plan B in case the State Board of Education does something that is furtherly absurd, if that is possible. So I think this will work out good. Thank you.
Melissa?
Yeah, thank everybody for your work. And I wanted to welcome our new interim superintendent to our first meeting.
And one of the things about being chairs, you get the last word, the, don't go, uh-oh. You know, there's been a lot of talk in recent weeks about what is the role of board chairs? And one of the things that board chairs have to do is they have to prep the meeting. They have to set the agenda. But if they just write it on a piece of paper, you don't get very far. You need to make certain that material is prepared for you, that some preliminary planning so that if you approve something, it can actually be done. And, you know, sometimes that means you're doing planning where you haven't got authorization to do the planning, but it goes with the territory that, you know, if if any of you have an item that you want explored, your chair should be planning around it to get the material you need. If the chair has it, you should expect them to have it for you. It isn't going around anybody's back or being power hungry, because God knows, I'd give this sucker up in a flat second if somebody wanted it. But the but the reality is that 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 is part of the gig, is to do that planning, to do that background work so that the meetings only take two hours instead of 15. And so with that, I again, want to thank all of you. I want to thank Andy Haas, who didn't know he was doing this two weeks ago. And my my sympathies, I'm not even congratulating him. I think sympathies is what's required here. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. See many nods. All right. All in favor, leave the room or turn off your computer. Thank you all.